This meeting to order. Today is April twenty-third and it is six P M. We'll go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Kendall.
The United States of America and to the degree public for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and have our roll call starting with Commissioner DeSoto.
Barbie DeSoto, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
And Alan, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Before we begin our meeting, I'll just read a statement on decorum behavior for the meeting. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. As you begin, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording of the meeting. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping and cheering during the hearing. With that, we'll go ahead and begin with our first item. Tyson Reynolds requested zone map amendment from the R one point eight zone to the R one point six zone in order to subdivide three point eight acres of land into six thousand square foot lots located at two thousand north Canyon Road Pleasant View neighborhood and Erin Ardmore will present this.
Hey, thank you, council or plan commission. Sorry, still thinking of my last name. Thank you. So this item is before you. The aerial map is on your left. You've seen this property come to you before with rezon requests. The R one eight that you recommended to the council was approved recently. That is the current zone. The applicant is back tonight to request that to go down to an R one six in order to divide that into six thousand square foot lots rather than a minimum of eight thousand square foot lots. The applicant has provided concept plans. You don't have a concept item because it is just a single family subdivision. So the lots would just have to meet the R one six zone. It might not necessarily look like that, but they'd have to meet those lot standards. Also got a detail of some grading plans there for the hillside. Because that is a big part of this property, always has been. This own change doesn't necessarily impact that at all because it's already zone R one eight. It'll just be changing to R one six. So we don't intend to really discuss the grading plan or anything like that with plan commission tonight. I would note that you did receive two public emails before the hearing in the last week. One of them has to do with that grading plan. That's why I wanted to address that. The other has to do with property line dispute. Again, that that would be a civil issue. So staff has no hesitation moving forward relying on the county records as given to us. So based on that, we are recommending approval of this to the plan commission city council and would be prepared to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Any questions for Steph?
I have one. What's the difference between the highest? I know that the hill is actually higher than what's behind it. Is that correct? What we can see is the highest point, but the point that the people live on is lower than what we can see. According to this contour inception view A.
Sure.
Actually, no, that's not true. It goes down a little bit, then it goes back up.
I'm not the guy to ask about grading plans, so I apologize.
I'm just wondering what the difference is in the height. Whether those lots need to be as deep as they are in order to accomplish this or.
Yeah, I would be able to.
You don't know. Okay.
The applicant is here and may be able to answer that question.
Erin, do you know if, I remember there was some concern last time about the steepness of that grade and they had actually done less than or less steep than what was allowed. Do you know if it's the same kind of grade as was?
Again, I don't. I don't have details of of the grade plan now. Because the question before says it's own change and the grading plan would come with the subdivision, whether that's R one eight, R one six and have a geotech report associated with that to make sure everything's going to meet code.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
It's just a quick math question and it might be on here. There's nineteen lots proposed. What would it have been with what's approved right now? With the eight thousand square foot lots. Isn't it eight thousand is what's approved now? Do you? So nineteen is what they're aiming for. What what is it now?
I'd have to quickly go back and do some math. Or maybe Rob could tell you.
We can ask the applicant.
Before.
Okay, he's nodding. He'll answer that question.
That's better than doing math. I like.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Go ahead and invite the applicant forward. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation if you need that long. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Following your presentation, if we have any questions, we'll ask them.
Actually, the question, if you take the three point eight four acres at forty-three five sixty square foot per acre, I could actually keep it at R one eight and get twenty-one lots roughly is what that works out to be. But due to the configuration of the requirements of R one eight as far as width and depth and dimension, it was much more suitable to apply for an R one six, even though sewer connections and all the other stuff. I'm not over. It's just through the layout of the land. So realistically, if it was a perfectly rectangle or what have you, sub a piece of ground and elevations are flat, technically at R one eight, I'd be able to get roughly twenty-one lots of those calculations. But due to the changes of elevation and the requirements, it reduced that lots and the dimension of those lots where R one six is more appropriate. And that's why we've requested this this change. Answer your question. If you look at the topography of A and B, he's just taken a slice of the future of where he's shown on the plan and showing you a cross section. So showing what it is, but coming from the street, it's roughly two percent coming to the street up to that first road, that first crossroad. And that's pretty darn flat on that first crossroad. From the first crossroad to the second, the slope is about ten percent of the road. Because obviously we're trying to maintain as much plus it will kind of help with some views as well. Then it comes basically flat again across. So roughly two percent off the road to the first street, ten percent from that first crossroad to the second. And then it's it curves around. That gives you any additional information. Other than that, I think what I'm proposing is pretty well self-explanatory, but I'll be glad to post any questions that may be there.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, I got a couple.
Yes.
So with the, so how many square feet are your lots now as? So you spoke about the topography and that you'd be able to, you know, get this many. So how many square feet are we looking at now on average? I know there's different sizes here.
Each of the lots are six thousand plus.
Okay, so with the with the current zoning of one R one, we're currently, yeah. With the topography, how many would you be able to get on there?
Well, all depends on how far I cut it down and what I retained. So to answer the question, alls I do, what what would be allowed from the city is take the total acreage.
Got that.
And so if I took it straight down and did a retaining wall, I could probably get close to twenty-one, but I don't think you would like the look of it. But I, to answer your question, on R one eight, you could technically get roughly twenty-one lots.
Sure. It wasn't exactly my question. I was just saying, considering what it is, what would be reasonable under its current zoning? Like basically, I'm just asking, how many more realistically are you asking to put on there? That's what I don't understand the differential on. Yeah. Never mind.
I'm not exactly.
Okay, my next question.
Have to cut. Yeah, I I haven't played with that.
You don't know.
We thought the flow was better this way than trying to.
My next question is. So it said in the paperwork that you're going to take it down to the grade of Canyon Road. Right? To the level. Obviously, you're going to be higher than the road, but basically you're taking it to Canyon Road level.
Well, if you look at the map behind you, the cross section of both A and B, you see where Canyon Road is and it comes pretty well flat. Why I say flat, two percent up to that first road. So in that first hundred feet or something, it rises roughly.
So here's my question. If you move all the way over here to where the established neighborhood is, what are those retaining walls going to look like now? Because where is the grade going to be in the new community compared to what the grade is in the established community?
In the established community to, we're almost down the grade because those lots are facing that are going to be designed to be a walkout. In other words, they'll be higher in the front. They'll step down to the rear.
So at the highest point of this line of lots right here, what is the what is the highest of that line of lots compared to the backyard of the established neighbors? Do you understand the question?
They're still getting, well, the back lots, if you're if you're proposing just the back lots that about the neighborhood to the east, is that what you're?
I'm asking.
You're ten or twenty feet below us.
Hey, that's my question. Yes. How high above is lot nine? Lot number nine, how high is it above? The neighbor right there, the backyard neighbor.
It's below.
It's below the neighbor. Okay, that was my question. The grades are below.
Yeah.
Because you're going to take that much of the hill away.
That slice you're seeing between the lower line is this, the finished grade, if you will. The upper line is the existing grade on each of those. And so you're removing the excess fill associated between those two lines largely in that cross section.
We need a laser pointer.
Does that make sense?
Just find this slope out.
Wrong button.
Now you've done. And I'm sorry I'm pounding on this, but I think this addresses some of the, this helps me orient to some of the letters that were sent.
Hold it down.
We just need a yardstick like they did in the first grade. Just hit the screen with the yardstick.
On this drawing is the existing grade.
I see.
The lower line is the finished grade once he's done his subdivision.
Okay.
So that flat line to the very east, that's the neighbor's backyard.
So they'll cut away the hill.
Okay, so you need to retain the neighbor's yard.
No, it's two and a half to one. If you look at the slope, we're slow, not in the geotech, I'd go as tight as one and a half, but for buildability and that. And you want flat lots behind or flat section behind, it's sloped at two and a half to one.
So there's just going to kind of be a berm there?
Well, it's just going to be gradual slope down at two and a half, one.
Okay, as in the second bottom right drawing. We're looking at the bottom right hand drawing, right? And on the far right of the bottom right hand drawing, there's a flat, there's a flat part of the line. That's the neighbor's yard.
That will be the back of the new homes. The very top is the neighbor's yard.
Show me, show me.
I wish I had a pointer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and where's the neighbors houses right here?
The neighbor's house would be off the right hand of the screen. They have a big backyard.
If you see this, this slopes down right here, then it gets flat. And then and just kind of a gradual slope down to the street. So this slope right here is a two and a half to one. This is pretty flat because that's kind of the backyard of the house before it starts to slope with two and a half to one. And so this is the house and the and the front yard and the backyard to that point. But after that, it slopes two and a half to one to the neighbor.
Mr. Slater, show them on this cross section where you were just pointing at steep slope.
Over here. Now you have A and B. These are the two cross sections. There's one and there's the other, which are these two slices, if you will. This, so here's the neighbor's yard to the east and here's the neighbor's heart to the east. We take this and we'll take this this section of dirt out to accommodate the roads and the elevation for the houses.
To show on that drawing, the steep slope.
Right here is two and a half to one going down. Yep, then it's kind of flat for the house in the backyard and slowly gradually to the road. Then it slopes roughly at ten percent from there to the next batch. And then you're floating to the street at.
And the line I'm seeing above behind the the upper line.
This one?
No, no. Yep, yep. That one is existing.
That's existing. That's the part that would be. Correct.
Okay.
But the answer beforehand with what I initially proposed is you were coming off of this elevation at two to one down to the dang near close to the street level, less about maybe one or two percent. So all this material is remaining.
Right, from the original plan.
From the original plan.
Okay, and that two to one slope does not require any kind of retention at all? Like how do you keep the soil?
And that's calculated by the ge, that's calculated by the geotech.
You need your microphone.
It's the type of material, it's the type of material that sits in this hill, which is basically a granular borrow. So yeah, at a two to one, it says in the engineering.
Sorry, I gotta back you up right there. Granual borrow. You're speaking in a jargon I don't understand.
It's rock and sand and gravel.
Got it. And you're going to put that against the bank so that it doesn't all wash into the backyard or?
Well, we'll end up having to, that'll become from a landscape plan, but we'll end up having to re-vegetate it and do some other things which really be done through the homes or the like that will plant and tree it and whatever else for their beautification.
So so that the neighbor's backyard fence doesn't slide down the hill, right?
At a two to one slope, yeah, that's it's not a.
It's not going to happen. Okay.
And it's actually shifting in this new design at two and a half to one to even further it.
A shallower pitch?
Correct.
Okay, so that bottom line will actually be a little taller, a little higher, a little closer to the original grade.
This is calculated at the two, from here to here is calculated to two and a half.
Oh, that is the picture of the two and a half to one. Okay, I see. Thank you. Sorry, that was a little arduous, but I appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Before we move to public comment, I do want to acknowledge the two letters that were mentioned by Erin Ardmore. We received letters from Lynn Sorenson and from Keith Curl. So those have been entered into the record and we've all read those. So on that note, we'll go ahead and open for public comment. We'll first invite any neighborhood or district chairs if they are present. Do we have any? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes to make your comment.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I'm Matt Wheelwright. I'm Chair of District One. So we discussed this and as you imagine, we've discussed the site before at previous meetings, but last week we discussed this plan. Now, we did not have this. I understand this, but we didn't have it. So some of the letters that you probably received were maybe very nervous about this. I'm less nervous now that I've seen this, but we did not have this last week. So here here's the gist of the meeting. The conversation was pretty comfortable, supportive of the zone change in theory. But without understanding the grades, there was a lot of anxiety about what this did, not just to the directly adjacent neighbors, but to anyone who uphill or downhill would be affected by the slope change. Not seeing that there are no retaining walls, I'm less concerned, but that was the major concern. But since it's my understanding that grading plans don't come before us or you, this was really the only venue to kind of voice that concern. I did just clarify with Erin that the bond that the staff report references would be associated with the hillside that remains, that I assume the two to one is the primary concern spot. So I think that also is is helpful. But I do think the neighbors were generally okay with getting nineteen single family lots in the area. Maybe even excited in some way, but hesitant because we hadn't seen this plan. It didn't have a sense for where the actual slope was going to go. So I think there are some neighbors here that maybe could now voice a different perspective, but we didn't actually even take a poll because there were so many unknowns. But that was the sentiment. Zoning, okay, nervous. Thanks. There's a little bit about the grade. So.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and now open it to the general public. Each member of the public will have two minutes to make their comment. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment during the session. If we have any questions, we'll invite you to come forward at the end to answer those questions. So with that, if you are here to make a comment about this item, please come forward at this time. Also, please remember to state your name and city of residence for the record. Yeah, you might have to pull it down.
Question. Oh, there it is.
It's working now.
The question that I asked at the district meeting and I didn't get an answer. I was concerned about the roadways within the complex. They just ended in blunt stops. What kind of provisions are there for people turning around? Normally, I would think they would be called the sacks or some kind of roundabout.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
Gary Curl, I'm here. My father Edward Curl lives on what would be the high side of the lower drawing. We have a couple of concerns and perhaps they're not so much directed at the commission as the developer. There is a bounder overlap that we feel should be resolved. It's a civil matter only if it can't be resolved. And we think that that should be addressed. That reduces the available acreage a little bit. A second issue is the tailwater from the temp canal which runs along the road up by the temple and the missionary training center drains and has always gone to the this hill at the elevation that it is. And so that tailwater needs to get down from the high elevation to the existing canal. And then the third thing is at the neighborhood meeting, district meeting, they had a presentation about urban wildfire concern of the interface and the hill and even at a two and a half percent. I'm old enough now that I couldn't walk up it. I could tumble down it and I couldn't landscape it and maintain it. And so as neighbors, we have some concern about what those seven lots that will have a slope as indicated on the lower drawing, how that will be landscaped so it's not just weeds and grass and a fire waiting to come racing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. The thoughts do we have?
I think we ought to ask about the canal and the and the, I also wanted to ask the developer about if he plans to put these lots up for sale or if he's going to develop a neighborhood there and sell spec houses or how that's going to work.
Are you willing to come up and answer some questions for us? Awesome.
Your first question was.
The canal that goes.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the neighborhoods questions.
The canal that I'm aware of has been into a pressurized irrigation line, which each one of these lots will want to utilize water for their their grass and other things. And so it will be rerouted to follow along the road. And I do have a cross section of that plan as well for the water that that mainly goes for the water share. So the another canal I'm not sure of, the main thing that I deal with is pressurized irrigation. And like I say, we are dealing with that associated with the running through the subdivision. Also, we'll have outlets to each of the individual lots. We'll be able to utilize that. Other water, I am not sure nor this on any drying or anything else of any additional sources of water than the culinary water that we're familiar with on the site as well as the pressurized irrigation. Both are taken into account of what the drawings and likewise will be passed through staff to make sure they all meet code as well as the water department.
Maybe that's a public works question?
Perhaps. I mean, I think in the end, that's going to have to be taken care of if there's a canal, right?
Okay, the other questions were turning around on the cul-de-sac and they were about the landscaping for fire. You know, grasses and fire down on this lower hill.
And reality wise, I'm looking at the challenges and concerns being much much less with what we've drawn here than what it currently exists with the access for fire coming out the lane. They can't get there. Likewise, this is designed for fire in place with the hammerheads they're referred to where the fire truck can pull up to the end of the thing back into that hammerhead and turn around is what they're designed for. And so this is designed to meet fire code. And that's the reason, like I said, particularly at the end, because the distance from the turnaround spot is longer. They had to have a referred to as a hammerhead for fire trucks to back into or cars or trucks or anything else that were longer than just pulling out to the street. So that's, I think that answer is it's for fire.
Awesome, what was your plan for the land? I don't even understand what part you would be landscaping here, because they all seem like private lots, but.
Well, that's the question, and I'm planning to build the majority of them, because I mean, somebody comes and has a real strong passion and the home they would desire to build would meet my criteria of the look I'm trying to emulate as I'm uh as I possibly let some, but I'm planning to build the majority of the homes in here. As I.
And to, and to sell them?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would be selling the homes, yes. I may retain one or something for one of my kids that lives down here, but as a general rule, yes.
And it's not an HOA? No, yes?
Well, it's gonna, because these streets are gonna be private streets, it's gonna have to be an HOA.
Okay. Where's the maintained portion for the city? I guess you maintain the most strip, right?
The whole subdivision is gonna have to end up. Otherwise, we'd have to change some of the curb and gutter and some of the other criteria for the roads to meet.
How long do you think this will take? That's a lot of dirt removal. That's like a lot of traffic on that road that's already busy.
Well, North Canyon where it's probably less than half the dirt we were hauling out of it. And beforehand, the calculations with us hauling heavy, you were sixty to ninety days to haul the dirt out, so. If we can get the same uh the dirt hole in that same method, we'd be probably roughly half that to grade the slope. Also, I think the city is desirous for some of this fill on one of their sites, so that may even shrink the distance travel to remove the, remove the dirt as well as probably benefit the city for their needs.
I think I've exhausted it, guys.
Met your quota? Any other questions? Since we've got them up here right now. Okay, thank you again. Other thoughts from the commission, where are we at on this one? Lisa?
Um, I liked this when we saw it before, and I, I really appreciate the elevations here that show us at least in my opinion, that these elevations are going to improve immensely from what's there. I feel like a gradual climb all the way up is much better than the very, very steep climb initially. I feel comfortable with the distance they are from the adjacent neighborhood. There's not gonna be a block of anyone's view. The one thing I just am troubled with is that we were okay with R one eight and it's basically the same, almost the same with R one eight, so I feel like R one six is maybe an unnecessary ask, like it's more of a, there's part of me that says R one six creates that transitional area between the R one eight and the apartments around it. But that other part of me is like, this is gonna be a really nice neighborhood. Do we need to, I don't know, it's like affordable housing and transitional zoning versus why wasn't it okay the way it was? And why are we asking for more? So, I don't really have an answer, but those are some thoughts that conflict in my mind about whether I like it or not.
Yeah, just to respond to that, it, for me, it's, it's hard because we don't see what the R one eight looks like, right? He mentioned, uh, I don't want to talk on his behalf, but he mentioned frontages and depths of lots and things like that that just don't fit well here. But without saying it, I don't know, right? So, I mean, at one point, I think we saw a plan for this that was much higher density. Um, with some multifamily units on it, and we were okay with that one as well. So for me, this is an interesting middle ground.
I don't have a problem with this six seven, I think it's great. I think it's great, more that we can get in there, the better. And to your point, Commissioner Hill, I think the MDR or LDR that we saw before, I think barring the ownership issue, I think probably would have gone through and, and that would have been much more dense than we've got now, so I think this is great use of the, of the property.
I agree, and I think that um like, it's gonna require a lot of engineering, obviously, so I think that it's nice that you can get more out of all that effort, you know, in terms of houses.
Yeah, I appreciate that we're getting houses instead of apartments that will belong to a landlord.
I think one thing I really like too is the fact that they don't have to cut out quite as much, so that slope in the back is not as long as it was going to be before. Um, less to landscape, less to worry about. And also just for the public, I just want to be clear that if there's a canal on this property, et cetera, there's already regulations that require that that's taken care of. It can't just be cut off or ruined in some way, it has to be maintained, and so I think that takes care of that issue in my mind. Other thoughts, are we ready for a motion? We'd like to make a motion.
Somebody wants to help me all make the motion.
Go for it.
All right, I make a motion that Tyler, that we approve, Tyler Rich Reynolds' request.
We're gonna recommend approval on this one.
I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion with Dan for that uh Plan Commission recommend approval for the ZOMAP amendment on item one, Tyson Reynolds', uh, ZOMAP amendment request for R one eight to R one six at two thousand North Canyon Road.
Excellent, do we have a second on the motion?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and start voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item one passes unanimously. And Andrew South will be giving a training on how to make motions after the meeting. Okay, item two, Joel Pilling requests approval of a zone map amendment from the R one point five agricultural zone to the A one or AI Airport Industrial Zone in order to expand his warehouse project onto the property at thirty-one eighty-five West five fifty south, and I'll go ahead and read item three as well. Joel Pilling requests concept plan approval for flex warehouse space in a proposed AI zone located at thirty-one eighty-five West five fifty south Provo Bay neighborhood. Aaron Ardmore will present both of these for us.
Thank you, and thanks for reading those in together. So the property is out here, um, Lakeview Parkway just north of airport and uh Canadian Construction, if you're familiar with the area. Uh, the zones around it, uh, the applicant develops the warehouse office like spaces on the right of the image, uh, those three white roofed buildings, uh, those are already in the airport industrial zone. I could see the adjacent zones are P of an agricultural. Uh, then the general map plan map, pretty much is all brown, uh, which is airport related, you see a little bit of that green across the street. Uh, that's for agricultural general plan designation. So getting into the proposal, um, the applicant really just wants to expand on, on what they've done so far, uh, so bringing this property that he's acquired into the same zone would allow him to combine the parcels and to build the same product that he's built uh already on the site adjacent. Uh, neighborhood feedback from the district meeting was positive, um noted that the request is consistent with certain uses and proposed uses in the future. Important note, maybe, uh, would be that the three properties adjacent to the west are all owned by Prop City, uh, so a couple of those are, are maintained as rental homes. Uh, and then that long property to the west is just a vacant piece of ground owned by the city. Um, so you won't have a lot of neighbor uh pushback or adverse impact as, as the Prop City owns us. So here's, if you haven't been out there, here's what they all look like. Um, he, he plans to build the exact same product, uh, laid out pretty much the same way. Um, so uh, the zone change and the council planner before you today, if those uh were approved, he'd still have to come back with a final subdivision application to the city, a project plan application uh, which would come before you and then um obtain the building permit at the end. Uh, so this is just the first step. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Lisa?
On page five of the item three staff report, it's attachment to the site plan. Um, I was trying to, just verifying with you that I'm interpreting it correctly. The building on the left with the five units in it is the new building that um we're talking about with item three, correct? And then the other three are the ones that already exist?
Yes.
Okay, so just south of that new building actually, if you look at the, the zone map that's overlaid, it shows that there's, I don't know, like ten or fifteen parking spaces there that don't exist because the building will be over top of them. Is that accounted for in the parking counts that were being swapped out? That everything will still total out to be the same, or do we actually lose fifteen more?
That's a great question, which helps me to address one of the points in my uh staff report that I gleamed over in my presentation, so I appreciate that. Um, so overall, it's a net loss, but overall, this site would still be overparked.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So I just wanted to make sure that however many that is, fifteen, twenty parking spaces is swallow, like is provided somewhere else, so it still works out to be a net, a net surplus.
Yes, uh, the math is that that change would be um a difference of thirty-four, no, twenty-one stalls, net loss of twenty-one. But he still would be providing two hundred thirty-eight, where only hundred seventy-nine would be required for the entire.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something that was missed or that they were being counted even though they weren't there anymore.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron? Okay, thanks, Aaron.
Thanks.
We'll go ahead and open it to public comment. Uh, do we have any neighborhood or district chairs present tonight? Oh, sorry, uh, I forgot the applicant part. We'll now go ahead and uh invite the applicant forward at this time. It's the applicant here tonight. Excellent, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Uh, when your time is up, uh, your microphone will be muted and we'll ask you any questions when you're finished.
Morning or afternoon, evening? So I own the three buildings around it. To ask Lisa's question, there's ample parking there. It's like fifty or sixty extra, it's, it's, it's substantial, so don't worry about that. The, these are flex spaces, the, the guy in the old house died. I just, I bought the house, and then part of that property goes on to the existing, which is what you asked. You're gonna lose a little parking because the new building comes on to the new one, but overall it has enough. Flex space is pretty popular now. I own several of these complexes in Linden and Vineyard. They're flex spaces, they come in from China, well Vietnam now, or wherever the tariffs thing is, and they go out in Amazon boxes. Um, I don't rent in the HOA covenants, there's no construction dudes or cabinet shops or anyone like that, it's, it's all online Realtor retailers. Several of the buildings there, Binky Bros, Pro Lash, and I own a cap, little small showroom, so you get a little retail out of them, but not much. It's just too, it's tucked over next to Kenny. You guys own the property behind which David Day's here, I think is gonna become hangers at some point, part of the airport is my understanding. These are very popular, there, there are lots of turnaround space. I believe his name was Richard, the old guy that owned the White House. He, when we originally did the first three, he had some concerns that because of elevation difference, he wanted it retained in the fence, and you can kind of see it there. I will move that and put it up next to the Provo City rentals, just to kind of maintain that. There was uh directional lighting um, was a concern, because Kenny, who I love Kenny Singh, but he has a construction yard next to me. He, he lights it up at night like it's, I don't know, the North Star. So one of the concerns was that all the directional lighting was up and down. I'll, I'll do that again, so it doesn't blind out. So between the fence, the elevation and the directional lighting, I don't think the neighbors will be too mad. It's, it's about what you see, yeah, I, it'll be the same as the buildings next to it. But yeah, we, we mainly rent to on uh online retailers. I will own at least half of this building. Uh, I have a partner in on it, because it's pretty expensive. And that's all there is.
Great, thank you.
Now I have a question.
Yeah, please, we'll ask you questions at this time.
What's the current, like, what's the current occupancy rate with the existing buildings?
Hundred percent, I've already rented this building too, it's just gone. There's just such a demand for it. So the first one is Binky Bros, uh, Pro Lash. There's another company that are called Bella Lash. The other buildings are a battery, stockpiling, selling R and D type thing, ionic metals and ionic, I can't remember what their other entity is, but it's basically both of them rent them. But the, I own these in Linden and Vineyard. They're, they're really popular now. Um, this one's great, you guys did a great job with Lakeview Parkway or the state did. It's on and off there, so there's a lot of flow around it. I heard some concerns a little bit about parking some retail in there. The retail's hard, you just don't get the foot traffic, you know? It's hard to get a retailer to come all the way out here between Kenny Singh and McCord's Green Houses on the other side, you know, it's, it's hard, but, but these online retailers, it's great. But I don't have any plans of putting jungle gyms. Uh, what, what is the other city ordinance, jungle gyms, adult natured, uh, laundromats, none of that stuff, that's in my HOA. It'll, it, these guys will be online retailers.
Thanks, thank you. Yes.
Can you explain what you're gonna do with the grade difference? I know you're moving the fence, but how are you, how is that gonna?
So there's I believe it's four feet. There's two rows of those uh concrete blocks, it's four feet. It, I will extend my grade outs to, to that four feet. Put a four foot retaining wall, and then there's a six foot uh black fence on top of that. So, so those people on the other side, um uh, they won't, they'll be ten feet below, eight feet below, or not, no, I lied. Five feet, four feet below me and, and the fence, they won't see the building. And as far as runoff, uh, David Day's here too. Believe me, the city makes me shove my water over into the detention retention pond on the south end.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now we'll open it to public comments. Um, do we have any neighborhood or district chairs here? Okay, not seeing any, we'll open it to general public. Each person will have two minutes to comment. Please start by stating your name and city of residence. Anyone here to comment on either item two or three? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Um, city staff, Mr. Ardmore. Does uh HOA transfer with ownership of the property, or is it something that can change when the HOA decides they want to change it? Like, I just, I, I love that he's promising very low impact uses, but I'm wondering um if that's something that can, that stays with the property or just with the ownership?
Well, I think the, the other protection there is the, the permanent uses in the zone.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I don't think we uh allowed uses that wouldn't fit in this area.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that.
So I, I don't think that's.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that I, because I, he's promised a couple times that it's gonna be just as nice as the other one was, which is fantastic. I love that he made those accommodations for the neighbor when he was concerned about it in the last time around. But I just want to make sure that we're planning for the potential if the ownership changes and and that becomes a problem.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you. Um, while I have the mic, I'll just share that I appreciate he's offering the same retention and lighting um things, I think that's a very considerate thing to do. Not just because there's homes next door, but just because it's not necessary to be the North Star. And he did a really nice job on the other one, so I, I feel like I have great confidence in the quality of this product.
I, I want to comment that I also agree with that, and the fact that the neighborhood's really supportive, that's great, and that gives me a lot of confidence that we should approve.
One thing I do also want to note is that this is such a smooth zoning transition, there's no gap, it goes like, it's one giant cluster of AI zone if we were to make the recommendation. So there's nothing spotty about it, it feels like it's a very, a very logical move.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's fully occupied and being used and, and the type of use that we've com- contemplated and planned for. And that, this was something that was brought up in a lot of other meetings when we've talked about airport industrials, that, um, that there was this type of demand for, for this type of product, and so it's nice to see that demand being
That it is real.
Filled and met, and yeah, um, so I'm really happy about that. And I can't recall if there's commercial allowed in AI or not, but um, given it being on. And I can't recall if there's commercial allowed in AI or not, but, um, given it being on. Lakeview Parkway and, and the growing area, I, I wouldn't be opposed to any kind of commercial in AI.
Are, are we doing two and three together? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not confident enough to make a motion yet, but I want to.
Any other comments before we do?
I'm just going to note that it's sad to lose a cute little house, but it's not a super logical place for said house to remain, so.
Right, yeah, those houses are all very, very close to the airport over there. Um, just to, um, dovetail onto Daniel's comment. Um, I think it's a discussion we need to have more of because I think there's different visions on what's going to go in around the airport and what AI zone should look like. In my mind, as someone that lives out there, I think we're going to see a mixture. I think around the terminal, we might see some more commercial hotel restaurant type stuff. But up on this kind of the end of the airport, it's just too far away from everything to really have that. And so these kind of, um, uses where we have these kind of online retailers, et cetera, there. You know, someday I still hope that we get like a UPS or a FedEx at that airport. And then it's really nice because then they're just going over there right next door, right? And that might be a great way for this to develop out.
Are there roads that connect to the Epic Sports Park from the west side or does it all go down to the south? Is it directly across from here or is this further north?
This is kind of northwest. You've got a gap before the Epic Store.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I just was trying to gauge whether any commercial attraction from that side would, would hit a node close by.
Yeah, we can look at a map sometime. I'll show you what it looks like there. Okay, you ready?
I'm going to try it, guys.
Awesome.
Okay, do I just do two or do I do two and three?
Uh, we'll, we'll vote on them individually.
Do them separately. Okay, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed zone map. Amendment to the city council, Joel Pilling requests approval of the zone map amendment from the A one. Point five agricultural zone to the A one airport industrial zone in order to expand his warehouse project.
Excellent, well done. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, any discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
I.
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 And I'll vote I, so item two passes unanimously. Motion for item three?
I will make the motion. I'll try. Okay, I reckon, uh, I would like to move that the planning commission approved the proposed concept plan for item number three. Joe Pilling requests concept plan approval for the flex warehouse space in proposed airport industrial zone.
Excellent, perfect. Okay, a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Okay, let's start voting. Commissioner DeSoto?
I.
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 And I'll vote I, so item three passes unanimously. Let's go ahead to our last item for the night. Item four, Development Services proposes adoption of city policy and potential amendments. To the Provo City Code to remove or limit data processing services, electricity regulation, regulating substations. And electric small generation as permitted, uh, prin- principal or conditional uses. And Bill Pepperoni will present this one for us.
A few meetings ago, the planning commission heard a request to amend the airport industrial zone to allow data centers. When that request went to the planning commission, to the city council. It was ultimately denied and the direction that came out of that discussion. Was for the staff to bring back to the city council policy of regarding data centers. And also potential code amendments if staff thought anywhere appropriate. Putting this on to your agenda, the way it's been put on initiates what's called pending legislation. So the city now has six months to bring forward any, any possible change in legislation that would take place. The city continues to receive applications during that time because this is not a moratorium. But any application that comes in during this time would have to meet any new requirements that would come up. Uh, there's been a committee of staff members formed representing the various departments. That committee will meet for the first time next week. It's the intention of staff to be able to wrap this up in ninety days or less. We don't think we'll need anywhere near six months to bring back to the city council some recommendations. Those recommendations would have to come through the planning commission before it goes back to city council. So we'd like to ask the planning commission to continue this item and, uh, staff will put it on the next agenda. When we feel like it's right and ready to come before you. It does look like we've got some public here to speak to this and because it's a public hearing, they should be allowed to speak. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. I, so I have read it and I have listened to you, but basically what are we saying? That the airport industrial zone change that was requested got denied. I know the city, um, members of the city came forward and said, actually, we should have said no to this in the first place because. So the thing we heard, they said, no, we should have said no to it in the first place because we already have places where we've assigned to have these. And it wasn't in the airport industrial zone. So now the new thing is saying, well, no, we want to amend where we were putting those or what is? I don't understand. Fill me in now in layman's terms. What we're looking at?
So first, the city council is asking for just general policy that would help guide them on where data centers should go. Secondly, uh, with the city currently allowing data centers in seventeen zones and those seventeen zones representing almost three thousand acres. The question staff is going to be debating is, is that appropriate? Should we, should, should we continue with that or should that be scaled back?
And so we're voting now whether or not that should be.
All you're going to tell is to continue this item because we're going to bring back to you legislation of the future.
So if we said no, it'd be like, no, we don't want to talk about this anymore. We're happy with what we have is the seventeen areas. Yeah, and if we said yes, we're saying, yes, we'd like to maybe scale back the seventeen.
Neither, we're going to vote to continue, which just means.
What, wait, we don't know how anyone's voting, I guess, right?
Yeah, the recommended, uh, vote from staff is that we continue it, which just means it's on hold. It's not a yes or a no.
But because it's pending legislation, if you decided to vote yes or no. The legislation would go on to the city council and the city council would vote yes or no or to continue. Because this is pending legislation. You're not a decision-making body on legislation. You're just the recommending body on legislation. Does that make sense?
So to see it, we have, to see what you have, when it's ready, we need to continue so that it comes back to us.
Yes.
Rather than saying, never mind, we don't want to see any information, have city council deal with it.
Right.
Thank you.
And we would prefer that it not be continued to a date certain because we're not sure what the situation.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, since the city is the applicant, we'll go ahead straight to public comment. Do we have any neighborhood or district chairs present to comment on this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it to the general public. You have two minutes to comment. Please start by stating, uh, your name and city of residence. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Okay.
And Matt Wheelwright, Provo resident, uh, Chair of District One. Um, two, two items that I find interesting about this, one is that, uh, data centers are incredibly heavy. Like triple, I think is about the number on a normal kind of commercial building. So I actually think putting it anywhere on the west side is a really bad idea because the soils and the water table cause some issues there. Um, I would also add, having talked to a lawyer who works closely with the state legislature. That the sentiment at the state and, uh, beyond is that data centers are the new, he said, the new Star Wars. Like this is the new battle of our time to see which country controls the data. And the AI generating power because it's so much grander than anything we've dealt with in the past. Um, I just found that very interesting and I, I commend the city on trying to figure this out. Um, I, when I first read this, I thought it said, let's, let's limit it and like make it go away. I would worry about that because hey, we're in a modern era where this is something we ought to be talking about. But I do think being very strategic and very careful, so I'm glad we're, we're talking about that and just a couple of ideas that. I've been reading about and talking with people about that I think matter in this conversation.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Greetings, Commissioner. Uh, my name is Ryan Smith. I'm the Director of Construction and Development for one of the, um, for B plus F Tempanoga State. We own the Old Nobel campus. We've owned that for a number of years. Uh, we actually this week submitted the application to planning, uh, uh, for a redevelopment opportunity. That we're looking to reinvigorate that campus site over there and it is a, um. A data processing service, so we're certainly interested in seeing what the potential for amendments, uh, to the city would look like in the potential regulation. From our perspective, we, we think it's an ideal location where, uh, our neighbors or the wastewater treatment plant. And the old campus, we're actually looking at the, uh, the one-off site that is a seven acre parcel. Uh, we've already, uh, put a few hundred thousand dollars into developing the plan, which is, uh, the, the resulting application. Uh, we encourage that you consider that. We, we'd love to put our energy into, to turning the commercial office. Uh, space deficit into a, you know, a, a growing sector, uh, for the economy and for, for the city itself. On a revenue base, that's for comments. I don't think you would have any questions, but I'm open to them if you have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Last call. Okay, so not seeing any other comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'm happy to make a motion to continue unless we want to chitty chat longer about it.
Anyone against continuing? Okay, let's go ahead and do it.
Okay, I, um, make a motion that we continue item four. Development Services proposes adoption of city policy and potential amendments to the Provo City Code to remove or limit data processing services. Electricity regulating substations and electric small generation as permitted principal or conditional uses. And that, that continuation would be indefinite.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote?
I just wanted to say that the more I looked into data centers after we had that vote, I was a little bit concerned about the hundred. The amount of pollution is tremendous. It's like the equivalent of putting a hundred eighty thousand cars on the road or forty. The, the very conservative number was forty thousand cars running all day, all night for a year. That's, we've fought pollution in this valley for as long as I've been alive. We've been trying to clean up Geneva Steel, trying to clean. The other thing is data centers don't actually take that many people to run them. So when we talked about an increase in how much, how, it's like a data center is like really not many staff, like. Way under a hundred, maybe under twenty. And the third thing is my understanding. The third thing was I just didn't like that it was interrupting the airport, which is our, what we've been making a future for over here. Like that's a big deal to us is growing there and when we're hampering it by putting a, parking a data center where there might be hotels. Or other amenities that would attract more business here. It, it's not just the business of the airport, it's the business that the airport supports. It's a big deal. So parking a data center that has not many people working in it and is polluting the lake and polluting the air, I'm like, bad decision on our part. Now, that's not to say that it isn't the future and we're not going to have them. I understand the industrial revolution happens and it belches smoke and we all get better after the first round of lung cancer for the first two generations. But I'm just saying, let's try and be smart about where we put it.
Yeah, I think all, these are all reasons why.
We should continue.
Look at it and look at it carefully. Okay, let's go ahead and start the vote.
I.
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 And I'll vote I, so the item is continued unanimously. Uh, do we have a vote to adjourn? A motion to adjourn?
Vote to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
I.
We are adjourned.
Oh, um. It, it tells. Insurance.
It tells the sound.
Like if you rear-ended somebody, your insurance would.